Good evening. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of the Speedway Town Council. It is 7:00 PM on July 14th, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will move into introductions. To my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinheinz.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Next to her is Councilor Sean Harrell.
Good evening.
To my far left is Town Attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Court Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Vince Snoblet.
Good evening.
And to my immediate left is Vice President Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Item two, we, minutes, approval of minutes of the June 23rd, 2025 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second, any comments, questions, discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item three, memorandum, approval of a memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on June 23rd, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of administration session, administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on June 23rd, 2025.
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All of those in favor of approving the memorandum of administrative session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, um, number four, requests for temporary road closures for the West Indy Art and Music Fest Jazz on Main and Light the Night on Main. Tammy?
Hello. Yeah, I thought I'd get them all over with in one session rather than dragging it out over three months. But I am here to request road closures for three of our events that we have every year. The West Indy Art and Music Festival is coming up Saturday, August 16th with the rain date of Sunday, August 17th. We are requesting the same road closure as last year. It worked out really well. That would be to close off School Drive between Parkwood and Beaufort Road. So it's just essentially the road that goes by the soccer fields in the park and in front of Wheeler. Beaufort will not be affected. Parkwood would not be affected, just School Drive. And that gives us the area for the food trucks for the event as well as the band trailers. We do have seven different concert jazz type bands playing that day, as well as the musicians who have the larger instruments. They'll have closer parking for that. And then the road closure would be from 8:00 AM until approximately 8:00 PM. The event time is 11:00 AM to 7:00. So as soon as we have the food trucks and things out of the way, we will open the road, but we're estimating 8:00 PM would probably be the latest that it would need to be closed. Do you want me to go ahead and just go through all of them real quick and do one vote? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. And so Jazz on Main is scheduled for Saturday, September 13th. Event time is 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We are requesting closure at 4:00 PM, and it'll be back open by 9:30 once everybody's out of the street. We are requesting 14th Street between Main and the alley. Again, the alley would not be affected, nor Main Street, just 14th Street between Main and the alley. And then the third one would be Light the Night on Main, Wednesday, December 3rd. Event time is 5:30 to 7:30. We are requesting road closure from 3:00 PM to open back up at 9:00 PM, probably sooner, as soon as we get everything out of the street from the event. That would be Main Street between Gilman and 13th Street, which would include the closure of 12th Street right at Main. So those are my requests. And it's all exactly the same that we have done.
I'll make a motion for the approval of requests for temporary road closures for the Indy West Art and Music Fest Jazz on Main and Light the Night on Main.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions for Tammy?
I think just the only one, we talked about this last year, Tammy, and I'm pretty sure, just communication with soccer. I think that was our only worry about the art fest. If there's soccer that morning and parents don't know and that road is blocked.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's soccer that morning, but.
That, thank you for the reminder. I will reach out to them this week. But I know it worked out last year. They did have some games, but they had them in the morning before it got real busy here. So, and there, there was no problem with us closing that road. They just parked there along Parkwood and the neighborhoods. There was no issues at all.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah. I think just a heads up would be, but yeah, everything else looks great.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving this request as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Tammy. Item five, special event request for the 2025 Holler Parade presented by the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Lisa?
Hi. Good, not good morning.
No, please not.
Thank you all for having me tonight. Once again, Brickyard 400 Weekend is coming up next week. So with that, we are excited to have the Holler Parade as part of the many festivities here in our wonderful town of Speedway. So we're looking to host this event on Thursday, July 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on Main Street. So that would entail support, the support from the town to help us with some road closures, as well as ensuring that our residents are informed of any potential roadblocks and helping with barricades to ensure that our Patreons and fans stay safe during this event. But of course, the main attraction is these hollers arriving from the Allison Lot and then parking on Main Street from that 5:00 to 7:00 period. And then from there, we'll get those hollers in so they can get ready in time for race weekend that very same night on Thursday. A point of clarity also is that this very night, following the Holler Parade, we also do have an event inside the track. So we are expecting just additional foot traffic and traffic in general, just as some of those fans are coming into town. So we are prepared to navigate that with the security that we have and obviously our own security staff. But that's kind of the only main difference from in years past from when we hosted a Holler Parade. And then the other main thing is requesting from the town to waive those fees associated with the event.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions for Lisa?
No, it's always a great event. I look forward to it every year. It's amazing that, you know, the crowd coming out and there's always other things going on the side. And I think you guys do a great job of really interacting with the public.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we'll have drivers there this year, so it'll be a nice way to.
That's always good.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right. If none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, special event request for the 2025 Hometown Parade. Gina Lane and Christina.
Hello. Good evening. This is Lane Warner and Christina Young, and I'm Gina Grove, and we are the Committee for the Speedway Hometown Parade. And we are here this evening to formally request approval to host the 2025 Speedway Hometown Parade on Friday, October 3rd at 5:00 PM. This aligns with Speedway High School's homecoming celebrations. And also, we learned from last year, in the event of inclement weather, we would propose a rain date for Saturday, October 4th at 5:00 PM. The parade will follow the same established route as previous years. We'll begin at IMS Lot 2 and travel over 21st Street, up Winton Avenue, and then conclude at the Speedway High School parking lot, just in time for the football game. That starts at 7:00, I believe. And we're also respectfully requesting that the Town Council consider waiving any associated fees related to hosting the parade. This event, it seems that even though we didn't have it last year, we had a cancel for weather. Community members are excited about it. We had a great inaugural year as well. Already, we have 13 local businesses who have committed to sponsoring the parade. So we're really excited about that, and we're excited to bring this event back to the town.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion for the ladies?
Just praying for good weather. It was such a bummer. I know all the work that went into it. Yeah, best of luck. No, really excited for the weather. You can blame me, most people blame me for everything else anyways.
I think it's nice that, you know, especially when they have the pop-up tents and all the chairs lining it. Brings people out of their house, and it's amazing how many people bring the kids out. Everybody's ready for candy and everything else being, you know, it's a, it's a great event. Really a community builder.
Anything different, you guys? I mean, I feel like the first year was so good. Like the route, everything, I feel like was good. Anything that you're changing or any feedback or anything like that that you guys heard besides like really praise?
I think one thing is we're ending at the high school, which as you all know, is going to have a brand new football field and facilities there. So I've spoken with some people there, and they're excited to welcome more people to show, show those things off a little bit. So that would be the fun, you know, conclusion to the parade.
Yeah, absolutely. Awesome.
Anything else?
No, just thank you guys for your time. I know it's a lot. So thank you guys for doing that.
All right. I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item seven, resolution number 2025-10, a resolution approving retirement of Canine Officer Ruck after a distinguished career with the Speedway Police Department and authorizing transfer of Ruck to Officer Matthew Turpin. Chief?
Good evening, Council. Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we got bad news about our canine having eyesight issues and the vet requests that are suggested that we retire the canine. So in normal fashion, every time we retire the canine, it's just been transferred over to the possession of the canine handler, and they accept the dog as, and they, they take all the responsibility for the dog, and it really becomes a pet. So, but we would just ask that the Council continue that tradition. And we want to thank Officer Turpin for, this is his second dog. I believe at this point, he's ready for someone else to move on and take over the dog. So we're exploring all our options with the dog at this point, but we would just ask that the Council transfer the possession to Officer Turpin.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions for Chief?
I was hoping Ruck would be here personally.
He's retired now.
I know, just to thank him, bring him to.
He had a busy schedule.
I, well, now he's, yeah, he's, he's good to go. But no, no, that's sad, but yeah, part of it, I guess.
Just about eight years.
Yeah.
The, and the looking to, if there's another officer willing to go through the training?
Yes. We have to find the dog. I mean, it's just not a regular dog that you go find at the Humane Society. I mean, these are specially trained dogs, and they're very expensive. And we're going to consider all that and, and see if we have officers that are arrested and taking over and going through the canine training. Training's pretty extensive. A few months to go through the course and get them acclimated to the, to the new canine. So, and we have to base that on when the training's going to take place and who's going to offer the training. So it could take us a while to get another dog.
Yeah, I just personally, the, you know, having a canine there adds a different factor when dealing with, you know, high intensity situations. It just can de-escalate. And then obviously for tracking and other things, it's, it'd be great to have if we could continue it. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Council.
Item eight, approval of agreement with Hap Industries Inc., DBA Christmas Decor Systems for Christmas Lights on Main Street. Cheryl?
Two Christmas events on the agenda in July and one night.
Christmas in July.
This is crazy. So yes, I guess I'm seeking permission and your approval to have a Christmas display on Main Street again. We've done it the last three years. It's the same company. Originally, it's the company who did the IMS Christmas Show, when they used to have their Christmas show there. So anyway, they did a really good job. They're good to work with. When we have issues, they're out here usually the same day, if not the next, to correct it. They do all the maintenance for it. So we would like to again do the same thing. It would include the, the installation and the maintenance of greenery on the light poles, additional lighting, snowflake lighting, changing up the theme a little bit this year. So instead of snowmen and penguins, I think it was, we're going with kind of a gingerbread type style of ornament, the resin life-size items along with some light-up items. We won't have the Christmas tree in the roundabout because of the, the creation of that. So we're going to add some more lighting and greenery along Main Street. So the contract was written up so that it's a one-year contract with a renewal for the next three years. Any questions?
And it is $30,000 annually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's 30, it should be less than 30,000, but 30,000 would be the max each year that we would spend. Sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of agreement with Hap Industries, DBA Christmas Decor Systems for Christmas Lights on Main Street.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
By putting up, you were talking about the snowflakes, because there will be a lot less snowflakes. We're not in the Alliance Club and it's dead away with putting up theirs.
There should still be, I mean, if the Alliance Club still wants to put their snowflakes up, there should still be room.
I don't think they.
They want to, okay.
No, there's a lot of them. They were, they're completely tore up after last year.
And that's kind of what I'd heard last year, but I didn't hear the definite direction. So yeah, so they, there'll be, there'll be additional snowflakes. I think I, I think I doubled the snowflakes that I'm putting on Main.
Oh, good.
Along with the greenery.
Good.
And then I think one of the bigger items is like, it's a gingerbread house. So I'm not sure where I'm going to put that exactly yet, but those details to come. But yes, to your question, it should be fine.
Okay, good.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I think, I think it's great. I mean, I think people come to our Main Street all year round, but then you come at Christmas, you expect decorations and that, and you see it in other communities. So no, I think this is great. I think it adds to the, you know, when you go to Light the Night and saying all of that, I think it's great. So I.
The feedback that it's always in social media is always positive. The only, the only negative that I ever see is why do we put it up so early? And part of that is because it is a costly investment. So why not get two months' worth and we, it's not Christmas, it's winter decor. So it probably will continue to be mid-November through the first of the year when they can first take them down.
Yeah, I think get your money's worth. Yeah, that makes sense.
I always think, you know, Main Street, especially with the flags that were put up this year, I mean, that really looked nice. I mean, the Street Department did a great job of doing that. And I think we ought to really, you know, do exactly that, really sell the Main Street and embrace it. We're good.
I just had a quick question. So you have the $30,000 number in here. Is that up to $30,000? You said you expected to be less than that?
I think the actual estimate was, do you remember, Grant? It was closer to 27 or 28.
I'm going to say 27.5 or something.
Yeah, 27.5. So it will be less than 30,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think saying up to 30,000 gives, if Cheryl decides, hey, we need an extra 10 this or 5, we have the option based on the contract to go up to that amount.
Okay. It just, the way it's worded is an actual $30,000 number. I didn't know if we need to change that. So it says up to, I don't know. Do you think it matters?
Yeah, I think you're right. It reads like we're giving them 30,000, not up to.
Yeah.
I can, yeah, if your motion is for that, then I'll just write it in there on the.
That's fine, because they haven't signed yet. So once we are able to sign, I can send it to them for the counter signature part of it. They did review it. I had help with the contract. But they verbally okayed it. So yeah, that's fine to read it out and initial.
So is there a motion to amend?
Sure. I'll do a motion to approve resolution 2025-10 with amendment on the compensation to read up to $30,000 per year.
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote to approve as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Cheryl.
I'm going to now work on like a giant size cookie cutter outfit for you two.
That sounds great. I do not like gingerbread, though. Not my favorite.
Item nine, approval of task order number eight. Wastewater Risk Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan with Wesler Engineering for the Master Service Project. Grant?
Yes, so this is, every couple of years, we are required to do what's called an RRA or Risk and Resilience Assessment and an Emergency Response Plan. We have hired Wesler to do that this year. Has to be submitted by, is it end of the year?
It's just an internal document.
Oh, okay. It doesn't need to be submitted to EPA. So the, it is an assessment of our vulnerabilities, both hazards, natural phenomenon, as well as those who might wish ill will on our facilities. It's an important document that will update, and then it will be used internally, as well as with public safety, to make sure that that asset is protected. The fee for that is a total lump sum of $7,000, $2,000 for the Risk Resilience Assessment, $5,000 for the Emergency Response Plan. And I think that's all the pertinent facts. So we recommend approval of this.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
A question on this. When we talk about the other ill will, does that include cybersecurity issues as well, or is that more? Okay, along that, will this also go to meet the new state legislation? I think it will. I'm trying to find the, my notes. There is a new bill passed in the last session that requires all water wastewater utilities to submit a cybersecurity risk assessment to the state. Will this cover that as well?
I think that that is being done separately, but the, the assessment has questions about cybersecurity as well.
I'll have to get back to you on that one. I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'm just more looking for the bang for our buck. If we can meet that obligation through this, then I think it definitely makes it a little bit more favorable. I can't remember. I had, thought I had the specific bill read down.
Got it.
But.
I took a note of it, so I'll look into it.
I think it's SEA 459 was the bill that was passed that makes that requirement now. Leave it, leave it to the cybersecurity nerd to point that out, so. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 10, approval of change order number one to the contract with Midwest Paving LLC for the 25th Street Reconstruction Project. Grant?
Yes, so if you haven't noticed, our project has not gone as quickly as we thought it would. We've had an inordinate amount of rain days. Not an amount of rain, but we've had a lot of different rain days. So due to that, the sub-base, sub-grade treatment has failed what's called a proof roll. A proof roll is nothing more than a heavy laden dump truck rolling over the surface. If it sinks in, it has failed. We want to make sure that base is solid, compacted, and can carry that weight before you put the asphalt on it. So what we need to do is what is called chemical treatment, or dry cement, or lime, to make that a harder surface. That will cost us an additional $67,886.20, bringing the contract to $2,384,255.89. That's less than a 3% increase. We would also anticipate, this is on the section of road from Lynn Hurst to about Moller. We will probably have to do the same thing when we get to the next couple of sections and might have to have another change order or two. I don't think it's going to fail as poorly. We won't have as much rain in August, and that should not be a part of, of the issues that we're concerned with. So we have reviewed this. We believe this is warranted. We negotiated with them. We actually cut about $35,000 out of this. They were willing to do that because we believe that both parties had some responsibility in it. The one thing I would ask that the Council strike is the contract time increase that is listed. We have not finalized negotiating that. When I got this on Friday, I had to put it in the packet, and we have continued those discussions. So if you approve it, say that we're striking those 16 extra working days, and we'll go from there.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the change order, striking the 16 additional working day verbiage.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, Grant, question. I know, obviously, there was the water break early on in this project. Does that have a direct impact to this fail, or that's completely just rain?
Completely separate, yeah. The, the rain over an extended period of time and an extended number of days is what caused.
The failure.
Yeah, the failure.
So like, if we would have done this a month or two later.
If we'd have started, say, in July, we might not have. But the difficulty is, in Indiana, you've really only got, particularly in Speedway, June 1 through about November 1. That's the only time you can really construct roads. To do this whole road, we're, we're up against it. So that's why we had to get started. We always wait till after the race.
Right.
We could have probably tore this up in May, but we had a lot of rain in May as well.
Okay.
Indiana's just a tough place to build roads.
Okay.
It really is. We also, to maintain access to the homes that are along there, we have about 50 homes that are, we put some extra stone down. That probably also contributed to some of the failure. But we had to do that so people could get to and from their residence. That was a, we knew that was potential, a potential when that decision was made. We just couldn't cut those people off because there's no other access to their homes.
Yeah.
And Grant, I know you mentioned that we had, obviously, this has caused a little bit of a delay by a couple of weeks. How quickly do you think they'll be able to be on site to start this process?
I think if you approve this tonight, they are ready to go tomorrow or Wednesday, and we think that will get them generally back on schedule. They asked for 16 days. We're thinking it's going to be three to four as an extension. So we think that's going to get them back to work this week. Because until that base gets finalized, we can't finish grade. We can't do curb and gutter. We can't do any of that stuff. That's got to be done. We also, I know Vince, you asked earlier and previously, will we have the road open for school? It's going to be very close. I'm just going to be completely honest. We're going to do everything we can to try to get there.
Right.
But the delay, it's just the weather has not cooperated.
Understandable. But there are the ones that took the road top off.
Yep, yep, 100%.
Exposed it to the weather, and then weren't able to get back in for it. I mean, it would have been fine if that, the road would have been there.
Sure.
And then if they didn't, they didn't have the, yeah, well.
The road project can't progress, though, until the asphalt is removed.
So.
We do have to repair the base because of, that's been the problem with that road for the past 20 years.
So moving forward from Moller to Parkwood, you said that they're going to be then taking soil samples?
No. So they are going to do soil samples on the next section of the road that you approved a design contract for from Parkwood to High School Road.
Okay.
Soil samples will not be done on the, the next segment of this project. They will, they will do it as they go along.
Okay, they're going to be.
So we're going to know more on that second section, what the soil is actually like.
Between. Between Moller and Parkwood.
Yep, because you approved that design contract last month.
Right.
We're hoping to bid that in, say, September or October.
Okay.
And that would not be done this year. It'll be next year.
So would that be subject to that roll test then, too?
Yep, all roads particularly are subject to those proof roll tests, yep.
Okay, good.
Because you, you want to make sure the base is solid.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, when we did the road 10 years ago in 2014, I'm not sure the base was really fully done right. I wasn't here at that time. I can't speak for it specifically.
No. It was late in the year.
Yeah, in 11 years it failed. That's not, that's not good.
And bottom line, we do not want that.
No, we want a good road. And a less than 3% change order increase, I think, is acceptable.
Just one quick comment, too, I'll add. I just want to thank Grant and team for negotiations. This was, ended up saving about, I don't know, $30,000, $35,000 through negotiation, so, yeah, on behalf of the town, appreciate that.
They didn't like when we said, here's what we're going to do, but it's a partnership.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 11, resolution number 2025-11, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Speedway authorizing the disposable, or disposal of certain property. Philip?
Yes, so we received our fire engine last year, and so as we're looking to dispose of the one that it replaces, we have to follow this procedure. So I would ask for your approval for this. It will allow Chief Fishburne to take some steps to fulfill the statutory requirements for some sort of auction or other procedure to take care of this capital asset. And then hopefully that has the benefit of getting it off our insurance as well.
Motion to approve, resolution 2025-11.
Second.
Any comments, questions for either Philip or Chief Fishburne? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, item 12, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I do have requests for both for you this evening. And the claims span the period of June 19 through July 9, 2025, and they are on 20 pages and total $2,419,004.66. The utility adjustments are for three different customers and are on two pages.
I'll make a motion for the approval of claims and utility adjustments.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions for Philip? Hearing none, I will call for a vote to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right. Moving along, we've got our reports from department supervisors. Cheryl, with Communications.
Hello again. First, thank you for approving the events earlier, the Holler Parade and the Hometown Parade. Both groups are really easy and good to work with, from my perspective, so they'll be great events, so thank you again. I want to remind residents, kind of on behalf of code enforcement, to make sure you're having your golf carts permitted. And if you need the details, all of that is available on the town website. They've, code enforcement has noticed that a couple of issues lately, those being seat belts, aric, kawaii, speed, speed, speed? Speed bumps, speed, uh-oh. Seat belts are required by all passengers. Golf carts are prohibited from driving on the sidewalks or the trails, and golf carts are prohibited from parking on the sidewalks or the lawns. So those are just friendly reminders. Couple of event reminders coming up. There'll be lots to do in Speedway on Brickyard Weekend, July 24 through July 27. As approved earlier, the Holler Parade, just a reminder, that's on Thursday, July 24. Hollers enter Main Street around 4:30-ish and will be set in place by 5:00 PM. So if you want to see them drive in, you'll have to be out there around 4:30. They'll be in place by 5:00. Along with the Hollers, there'll be fan engagement activities in the parking lot that's located next to Barbecue and Bourbon, along with at the Plaza Park, and the event concludes at 7:00 PM. The streets will be closed, I believe it's at 1 or 2 that day. I can't remember, and I'm sorry. But I was saying, communications to the businesses now that it's been approved, as well as to the residents. On Friday, the 25th, I'm hosting our next movie on Main show, and keeping with the Brickyard theme, we're going with Disney Pixar movie Cars, which should be fun. It's this month. It's sponsored by Barbecue and Bourbon, which makes it free when we have sponsors like that. Barbecue and Bourbon is really excited about this one. They've been pushing it really hard to promote, probably more so than I have, quite honestly, so hopefully we have a good turnout for it. I'm also working with them and maybe doing a small music entertainment before the movie starts. That's to be determined. So watch our Facebook, their Facebook for updates. Movie will start as soon as it gets dark, which hopefully is about 9 o'clock. Saturday night, on the 26th, July 26, I'll be back at Plaza on Main with Tammy for a live music show. It's from a friend of mine, actually. His name is John Stevens Jr. He plays a little bit of rock, a little bit of folk, a little bit of country. He has the real gift of connecting with the audience that he's playing for, and it's always a fun show, so that will start at 6:00 PM, and John will play until 9:00. Again, it's a free event, and this one is sponsored by Sunbury Boutique and Speedway's Body Beautiful and Lush Spa. For both Friday's night's movie and Saturday's music performance, remember to bring your lawn chairs, your family and friends, and grab a snack or drink from one of our Speedway businesses. Last, touching on the summer promotion that I rolled out a couple of weeks ago called the Summer Pit Stop List. It's pretty simple to participate by simply taking selfies of yourself, doing the 10 items that are shown on the screen up here. You'll receive a garden flag, and you may have noticed it when you walked in the door out here. It has the town logo on it, so the first 100 people to do this gets a free flag, and then Funday's stepped up, and they're offering tokens for a free ice cream scoop for the first 100 to do this. So all the details are on both our Facebook and our website page. If you can't read that, I'll go through them real quickly, the activities that you'll want to do and then get a selfie of. And then once you do that, you'll post it to Facebook and use the hashtag that we've provided. So everything is free. It's attend one of the concerts at Meadowwood Park. Check out a book from Speedway Library. Have a water play day in your backyard, whether it's with the garden hose or the swimming pool, water guns, whatever. Take a pic in front of the Speedway Gateway sign. Attend music, the music on the plaza. Have a play day at Leonard Park on their playground equipment. Come to a movie on Main. Take a walk or bike ride on the BNO Trail. And finally, find the banner that I have posted on Main Street that announces or reveals the 2026 Rockin' on Main logo, which, when I put it together, it's kind of in the spirit of the town's centennial year as well. So again, once you complete those, then you'll do a Facebook post. You'll hashtag Summer in Speedway 2025, and then we'll reach out to the winners. That's it.
Okay. Any questions?
I've got some work to do. I want one of those flags. That's awesome. I love that idea.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Next up, economic development. Kyle?
Evening. Thank you, councilors. Roundabout is obviously going. It's progressing very well. We just finished SRC, and we got approval to enter into the last contract we need to finish up the project. Everything is still on schedule and on time to be completed. Per the agreement, over the next two weeks, they're going to start putting in pre-built radius forms, install the limestone veneer foundations, and the rebar and concrete footers and wall, and they're also going to start installing the dimensional wall. We are currently working on finishing up approval of the panels that will be, the perforated metal panels that will be lit up at night surrounding the roundabout, so we'll finish up getting those approved and get, start getting those made here before too long. Main Street survey, that's been going. We, they are, Kesar, Kesar Consulting Group is doing that. Currently, they're doing the existing conditions documentation. This is going to be taking video survey, photo surveys of Main Street prior to any work started. This footage is going to serve as the visual record and help support design development, stakeholder communication, and future references throughout the project. So if anything's broken, that wasn't broken before, we have video and photographic evidence that it was that way. They're also transitioning from the topographical survey to preliminary design. They've completed the survey corridor, provide detailed, accurate representation of existing site conditions, including elevations, utilities, roadway, geometry, surrounding features, things like that. The data is going to be used to inform and guide the development of the preliminary design. We've got, oh, and we just approved at the SRC for Holler Parade to, for the IMS to utilize Plaza on Main and Parking Lot for the event.
Any questions?
I might just ask you, you know, in terms of, when they do the evaluation, are they looking at, you know, what failed, what worked, what didn't work? Where, you know, from that standpoint?
One of the things is the brick in, on Main Street. I believe that's going to be taken up, and it's going to be stamped concrete. It's just going to provide much longer lasting durability for the.
About the expansion joints, the raised concrete, it seemed like they just fell apart.
Okay. I'm sure they're going to be looking at everything, but I'll make sure, make a note.
Good.
Anything else for Kyle? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please, Chief of Church.
Good evening again. From past meetings, as you recall, we had two applicants for which we had sent down, we'd given conditional offers and employment to. Both of those applicants, the good news is, they both passed the screening. Bad news is, in the meantime, one of those decided to go to another department, so out of that, we do have our one candidate that we have submitted to PERF for final approval, and once we get word back from PERF, we'll establish this wearing a date. So along the same lines, during that time, we'd interviewed 16 other candidates to fill that anticipated position in October, so we will attempt to pull two of those candidates to fill those open positions that we have. Good news is, two of those candidates have already passed their polygraph, which is a big step for us. If we can get them through the polygraph, they usually do pretty good, so. And I'd like to recognize one of our officers, Officer Carter Pell. He's responded to the Texas flooding tragedy. He's gone down as part of a, an Indiana Department of Homeland Security search and rescue team. He operates a cadaver dog, so he's gone down, and he should be back before race next weekend, but we hope he's safe and wishing well while he's down there. I'd also like to remind everyone that we do have a race next week, so, not this coming week, next week. In beginning that Thursday night, the 24th, we will begin our race parking, so we just ask everyone to be cognizant of their streets and remind them that if we have race parking, we will start enforcement. So, and would like to remind everyone that on race day, we do not allow golf carts in town. So, and I will end with, so far this year, the department's responded to 13,538 calls for service, and we've issued 3,062 traffic violations, so, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief of Church?
No, I just wanted to find out, too, Chief, what's your thoughts on the parks? Are we getting better? Are we getting, you know, challenged?
All of our officers are supposed to notify us each time that they respond to a park, and we haven't had a lot of those that have come in, and so the notifications, I believe it's getting better. So we, our officers, they go through, they do regular park checks. We require them, when they go through the park, to, to do a park check on the, on their laptop computer, so we can see when they have traveled through the parks. So I believe it's gotten better, so.
And just to clarify with the public, no fireworks?
No fireworks.
In the parks, and how about schools?
Well, the, we had an incident at the park in Wheeler School where some kids, it looks like they threw a firework into one of the dumpsters and caught the dumpster on fire, and we had to have the fire department come. We hated to get them up, but.
You can rebuttal later.
Very quick and prompt, but.
I've got the mic after you.
I know, payback. But yes, we always, every year, and every police department out there, we have issues with fireworks every year on the 4th of July. You all know, they're a week before and a week after, and everybody goes to buy them the day after, and we get another week of those sale fireworks, so. But we always try to keep an eye on the parks for the, but it's a busy night for us because we're responding to a lot of calls on 4th of July weekend.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I can understand that in a relationship to all of it, but, you know, there's large areas around town that, you know, that are owned by private individuals that, I mean, if they had permission, I guess, or they could walk out there, but the schools and parks are not the place to shoot fireworks, and we had quite a few people on public streets
Yes.
shooting off fireworks in gutter areas.
Yes.
You know, which is a little challenging when you're trying to get down with a car. So, good job.
We'll deal with it again next year.
Yeah, you'll, yeah, or whenever.
Yes.
The next celebration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. Next up, fire. Chief Fishburne?
Good evening. While we're on it, you know, I'm the party pooper in my family because we teach kids fire safety in the schools, and we talk them to stay away from fires, stay low. Then we hand them a burning stick in their hand to wave around. That'll brand you like a branding iron when you're done with it, so. It doesn't work in my family either. They just tell me to sit off to the side. A couple of things, a couple traditions that we started two or three years ago with the band. Next week is Band Camp. We'll be cooling them off on Wednesday with the monitor nozzle, and then we're going to be feeding them on Thursday, like we do the football team in the fall. Kind of, kind of a new tradition we started last year. I think Nick helped with that. Angie Goodman helps with that, so we'll be doing that again next week. Some of you may not know, but August 29 is the opening game for football season, and they've asked Police and Fire Honor Guard that night to present the colors at that event, so we're looking forward to that. We also had an individual who will be leaving us for another department, which is bad news. The good news is, we have a certified list, and we're going to, we're going to have our first candidate ready so that we kind of skip through that seamless transition of, you know, people leaving. And to be honest, it's a department closer to his home down south. He's going to the city of Bloomington, and we wish him well, and, and we are really appreciative that he's kept us in the loop so that we can prepare. You know, it's not two weeks' notice, it's two months' notice, so that helps Chief Milhorne and I kind of get the PERF stuff done and all of that, so, and we've got some great candidates. Our run totals for the month of June were 291 runs, actually a low amount of EMS, 55 point, 55% EMS, and 45% fire and car accidents. So that's really all I've got.
Any questions for Chief?
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Next up, Parks and Recreation. Tammy Smith?
Logan. Concerts are underway. We've got three completed and five more to go. As a reminder, they're Thursdays, 7 to 9. The lineup can be found on the town's website under Parks and Recreation, as well as other events going on, like the Plaza events. That can also be found under Parks and Rec of the town's website. We want to thank our sponsors for this year's concerts, the Speedway Lions Club, Westler Engineering, Alliance Insurance, Funday's Ice Cream and Sweets, Jennifer and Curtis Miller Family, and Orthodontic Experts. Thanks to them, we were able to have seven concerts this year, free to the public. We did have eight concerts, but one of them was free to us. Thanks to them, we were able to have seven concerts this year free to the public. We did have eight concerts, but one of them was free to us, the National Guard Infantry Band Concert was amazing, um, so if you missed out on that, it was just, it was really good, so I'm still getting, um, lots of positive feedback on that one. Cheryl already went through several of the Plaza on Main upcoming events, again, look those up on the town's website under Parks and Rec, but I did want to highlight, um, I have just recently scheduled a Take Flight Animal Show for July 30th, it's a Wednesday, 3:30 to 4:30 at the Plaza. Thought that'd be kind of a fun show for the kids before they go back to school, I believe they start back to school that Friday, and that'll be 3:30 to 4:30 at the Plaza, sponsored by Parks, um, he has predator birds and other animals, and it's educational, uh, I heard it's kind of educational science mixed with dad jokes, so, that should be pretty fun. And let's see, Market, the Market of Meadowwood started last week, um, it's kind of a slow opening, uh, the guy that normally has our produce, because of all the rain that's affected roads and so many other projects, it's also affected crops, you know, he got things in late, he lost a bunch of stuff, and so he's got them replanted, things are coming on nicely, but it's just delayed. So we hope to have some produce within the next couple of weeks, but we have lots of other great vendors, so come out and support them, that's on Thursdays through September 4th, 5 to 7:30, overlapping our concerts. And then, let's see, next week, Tuesday, July 22nd, this has just been recently, um, planned, and it'll be at 6:00 PM at Meadowwood Park. We will be highlighting a book that was written by a local resident who's also a race car driver, Zachary Tinkle, and his book will be going in our story walk at Meadowwood Park. He will be out there that day to, um, autograph some hero cards, um, so people can come out and interact with him, and he is now a, a driver in the NASCAR, Arca Menards through the Xfinity Series. So he lives right here in Speedway, we want to promote, um, him as well as the book and the story walk, uh, so again, please consider coming out Tuesday, July 22nd, 6:00 PM, bring your kids, walk the story walk. We may want to maybe get some, uh, town leaders or some people to come out and read a book, or read a page out of the story, maybe do a little promo thing with, uh, Bill and Brian, so Cheryl's going to help plan that or work on that. And then another thing, just to announce that, uh, we did order new bench swings for Leonard Park, and we have received those, so now we're just waiting on the installer to get those put in, so we hope to have the new bench swings at Leonard Park, um, installed, hopefully within the next month. That's all I have.
Any questions for Tammy?
No, thanks Tammy.
Yeah, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Public Works. Brad?
Good evening. Uh, we'll start at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, the plant treated 139 million gallons for the month of June, preventative maintenance and groundkeeping is ongoing. The 1st of August, we are expecting to start getting our equipment arriving for the energy savings project, so that project will be starting around mid-August now, so, uh, pretty excited about that. And the manhole lining should start sometime after the Brickyard 400. Also too, our new air conditioning HVAC, also carbon filter has been installed, it's working great, so, uh, we certainly appreciate y'all's approval of that. At Water, plant treated 64 million gallons for the month of June, ongoing preventative maintenance, distribution installed 140 meters for June. At Street, cleaning sewers, street sweeping, picking up yard waste, patching potholes and preparing for the Brickyard 400. That's all I have.
Any comments or questions for Brad?
No, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Brad, after the meeting, if you could sign that proposal with Wesler, it had your name on it.
Yes, will do.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Town Manager Report.
I just have a couple of items, I am not sure we will have a need for a town council meeting at the end of the month, on July the 28th, um, but we might do a claims meeting, I, I have no business at this point, usually I have a couple of items and there's just not been anything that needs the council's approval, so I will let you know. Not that we're trying to get out of meetings, but just wanted to let you know, Crawfordsville Road is making good progress, 25th Street is struggling a little bit, we've already talked about that. We are also in the throes of creating our 2026 town budget, um, we still hope to have those presentations to the council, I think it's the 18th and 19th of August, so we have about, about a month. We're trying to finish up those meetings with department heads, I think we have done most of them, but we still have a couple of those left to do. I'm going to defer 30 seconds to Cheryl if you want to show that flag. But you got to hurry. She, she had forgotten to show the flag that comes with the.
You know, I do this every staff meeting, we, I go in the first, and then I always end it because I have to have the last word, so, yes, so this is the garden, oh, yes, this is the garden flag from the little promotion I talked about a few minutes ago, isn't that cool? Get taken selfies, thank you.
That's all that I have, thank you.
Any discussion questions for Grant? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to reports from the council, starting with Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
All right, Sean?
Just want to reiterate something I said, I think, a couple of meetings ago, is just, you know, right now, there's, I know there's a lot of projects going on in Speedway, um, you know, obviously 25th Street isn't going as, as quickly as we would hope, um, and can cause some frustrations, but, um, it is, I think, a really cool thing just to see all of the, the progress being made between 25th Street, Crawfordsville, the schools, um, the roundabout, and I know I'm missing other things, but lots of progress being made, which is exciting. Lots of work going into it, so thank you to all the teams that are making those things happen, um, and, uh, I know the schools, for those of you who have children in the school system, they sent out a video with some updates on all of their projects for the, obviously the football field is, is one that's very visible, but there's a lot of other great things that are going on as well, which I thought was pretty cool.
Junior Harry's getting a new basketball.
Well, there's that, there, there, you know, the auditorium is getting new curtains and flooring and all the air conditioning and, and, you know, different things that go into it, so, um, anyways, I'll get off my soapbox, but I just think lots of good things, it's, it's a fun time in Speedway, so, you know, bear with us again a little bit longer as we get through some of the construction, uh, but, but excited to see the outcomes, so.
It's better than nothing at all.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Vince?
Uh, really, I have nothing right now, and appreciate all the work that's being done.
Vince, I heard that you might have received an award from the Lions Club, is that correct?
That was, I don't, I didn't bring it, no. It's a senior citizens award. You made it.
You're, you're humble, but it's for all your hard work, volunteering and giving of your time, and, so I just wanted to make sure that was brought, brought out.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right, Jason?
Nothing for me tonight.
And nothing for me, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:57.